Good evening, folks. All right, our last meeting of the year, how about that? Lovely. All right. First of all, I need to motion to reconvene from executive session.
Mr. Mayor, will we hand the executive session?
A second.
All right, proper move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Executive session has been adjourned.
Councilmember McClanahan?
Here.
Councilmember George Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Kabel? Councilmember Dahan Adama?
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a form.
I hear you, Jasmine Kabel. All right. You stand, please, for invocation.
As we stand tonight for our invocation, I do want us to remember the Flores family and these great men and women in blue who sacrificed their life every day for us. And we pray that the Lord will come for the strength of that family but also protect those that are out there protecting us. So remember them during this season and this new year that's coming here. Pray for that family. Father, we thank you for this hour, this time. We thank you again for this last meeting of the year. We thank you how you brought us from the beginning to this place today. We thank you for the presence of your Spirit. And Father, we ask that you continue to empower us with your knowledge, your wisdom, your presence, and your anointing. Thank you all those that are here to be a benefit and a blessing and a solution for the problems and concerns of this city. And we honor you and we give you all the praise and glory for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, but we're going to go to the council. We're going to go to the adoption of the city council agenda for today. Council plan moving number two, resolution to appoint new member development authority. Are there any changes of limits?
Mr. Mayor?
Item number 10.
We don't have the citizens for documentation, so I would rather like to remove that from the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number two, is that supposed to be Rob Turner or George Turner concerning the opening of district? As I see that I am on the steering committee, that's what I'm doing, sure that this is correct.
Oh, which one?
Three.
Oh, number three.
Resolution to establish it.
It was Roger. But I think it had to do with who... George was the one who said that he would...
Just a second, just a second. Okay.
So, but it's actually four, Rob Turner.
This name might be in the resolution, but they didn't want to...
Okay, okay.
They didn't want to just who put the items on.
Ah, I got you. Okay. You do. Now, which one of y'all had a different last name? Can I tell? Which one? What other? Wow, okay. All right. Okay, and are there any other changes, council? Okay, seeing none, I'll take the approval for the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I will approve the agenda for the night with the adjustments.
All right.
Second?
Proper move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda approved. Minutes for the city council meeting for December 5th. Council giving opportunity to give a final conclusion for that.
Hands is one correction intended called in. That was a date that was incorrect on one of these you had in May, I mean November 1st. It should have been November 7th.
And I'm sorry, councilman, which one was it? Oh, okay, you got it. I mean, I have it, I'm sorry.
We're doing 7 minutes of option instead of November 1st.
All right, council, anything else? All right, seeing that, I'll take motion for approval of the December 5th meetings with those changes.
Mr. Mayor, make motion that we approve the minutes with the appropriate changes.
All right. Proper move in second, second in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved. Madam Chair?
May I have five speakers?
Right.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Marcus.
In advance, Merry Christmas. Ms. Kabel, I hope you recover soon and have a great Christmas. There were two things tonight that I wanted to comment on. The first is the housing authority. And I just find one part of the resolution establishing the housing authority a little funny, which is that you all are declaring that there is a need for a housing authority because there's a shortage of safer sanitary dwelling accommodations in the city available to persons of low income. And I just don't think I realized that we had, that we need more low income, not affordable, but low income housing, and that we needed a housing authority to get Washington money and spend it, as Washington money must be spent, on low income housing. So I just want to express some surprise about that and also question how much low income housing we have and affordable housing and how much we want. And again, I think I've said this before, urge the council to determine those numbers and then to decide what to do. That's all. This lost item is not on the agenda any longer, and I'm disappointed because I was hoping you were going to use that to discuss the recommendations that SLOSS Citizens Oversight Advisory Committee, which I chair, gave to the council. And I just want to express the hope that you will, in a work session or a council meeting, consider those recommendations and act wisely. Other than that, again, Merry Christmas, safe New Years.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus.
Good evening. Have a holiday, have a quanta, hanka, whatever you celebrate. Two things. There was a lot on next door about the Big Lots closing. And I know you guys have nothing to do with what a landlord can charge a tenant. What I'd like to suggest is that maybe someone from the community development or CID or something have a conversation with these landlords about what's driving the price increases of the rents within the city of Stonecrest. I know we're supposed to be getting, we're getting this dealership and we're getting a QT, but that really doesn't necessarily mean, you know, good development. We also need to get better restaurants and better retail and all of that. So keeping that in mind, that maybe someone can have that conversation with them and just ask them what's driving it. Because that Big Lots used to be a, what is it, home goods, that they never had anything in there that was any good. And then there was something before that that was doing really well, and then that's gone. So now when Big Lots goes, what's going to be there? That's another empty space that we can't have people come and spend money. And we need that, we want that. The other thing is this SLOSS, which Dave addressed, I'm hopeful that you guys come to some resolution. I was on Mountain Industrial on Friday, and DeKalb County has already started paving all of that. Now, part of it is Tucker, but the majority of it near Sands Club has already started paving, significant amounts. And I haven't seen anything. I just see little patches here and there, and there were other things on the one next door where people were like getting their, their cars were being damaged by the potholes. So I'm hoping that you guys come to some resolution. We made some recommendations, you know, look at them, talk about it, come, you know, find something because we have the money, we need the work to get done by the spring or at least start it. Because, you know, the whole premise of the city was to make it livable and beautiful and all those things and encourage people to live here. But bottom line is, no rent's going to come here if there's no retail, if the streets are jacked up. So we need to work together to get something done. And hopefully, you know, you guys can kind of put aside any egos or personal feelings because it's really not personal. It's really about the business of the community. So thanks in advance for all you guys do.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Bernard Knight, Mira Cardenas, and Fay Cofield.
Mr. Mayor, city council, as always, it's an honor and privilege to be here before you tonight. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed Historic Preservation and Cultural Landowners Commission for several reasons. Number one, this ordinance, present form, is what state law requires. There's certain standard format, this is what is required. And I regret to say that it is nothing like the original proposal by Councilwoman Adoma, which basically tracked the city of South Fulton for it. I am cognizant of the statement that Councilwoman Adoma read out at a previous meeting with her, I think, 10 bullet points of what she hoped this would accomplish. I again regret to say it will not do that. Perhaps two or three of the bullet points actually would be something that would fall within the purview of this commission, but things like entertainment, entertainment venues, putting on concerts or whatever, it simply is not within the jurisdiction of this commission. We do not know what the cost of doing this would be or how complex it would be, but I will tell you this, I have had over a decade of experience with the DeKalb County Historic Preservation Commission and their ordinance. It is a quadmire. It is a quadmire for the people, for the attorneys who have to practice, the people who sit on the commission, a great deal of turnover. It is not exactly a mess, but it is a struggle. It is a struggle to maintain and a struggle to administer, and I have to believe it's very costly. I do believe that it's possible that this commission and this ordinance might be a good idea, but only if we first have a study done, say by the Carl Vinson's, creating an inventory of the possible buildings and structures and sites that need protection and also coming up with an estimate of how much it would cost. Y'all have been great stewards of the public money. Y'all just approved a budget with no taxes, it's balanced, you're developing a reserve thanks to the wonderful efforts of our city manager and staff. We need to continue, we ought to continue to be good stewards. And the way you would do this is before we take the giant leap of creating this commission through this ordinance, first find out a little bit more about it, which, about things that at this point we're just being asked to set on faith. Thank you very much.
Who was the next?
Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to talk with you. I think Bernie and I are going to do point, counterpoint after this. I'm here to speak in favor of agenda item number eight, creation of a historic preservation ordinance. You know, one of these, what this ordinance does is simply passes, enabling legislation so that you can then have the power to create historic districts. In and of itself, the ordinance doesn't create a historic district, it doesn't obligate the commission to ever create a historic district, and it doesn't obligate the city council or the city to administer that either. When this first came up, a lot of people said, what's the rush? Why are we doing this now? And in light of the recent demolitions of two historic structures on the corner of Brownsdale and Klondike Road, it seems that it's not only timely but pressing that the city does start to address the historic structures. And the power to do that rests at the local level, it doesn't rest for the national designation. This is the only protection that you can offer to your historic neighborhoods. On November 14th, I sent an email to all members of the council and key members, including the city manager and the community development director, talking about some ways that if you have reservations about this ordinance, you can get more information about it so that you can fully understand what passing it means. Historic districts are created by you all, and I hope you all will see the benefit to creating those historic districts from economic development, tourism, community pride, these are all benefits that the city can see from this. I provided you all with some research links. If you have not had an opportunity to fully research this, I passed on to you the name of Sarah Rogers, who is with the State Historic Preservation Office, who's willing to come in and do a presentation for the council. She's the expert at the state level who can address your concerns about what it means to actually implement a historic preservation commission or pass the ordinance. So I hope you all will see the benefit that this can offer and pass the ordinance unanimously. However, if you have reservations, I do urge you to take some more time, consult with the experts, and invite Sarah Rogers or other experts that you all identify to talk with you more about it. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. I have sent each one of you a email about these trees. I know you think it's petty, but when you see the amount of trees that was taken down, you will understand what my concerns are. Also, it's been mentioned that there was no tree ordinance in DeKalb County. It was, you could take down only five trees. And most importantly, my complaint was filed in August or September of 2017, when Stonecrest was in fact a city, contrary to what was stated. In addition to that, my first complaint was filed with DeKalb County in 2015, at which time they issued a stop work order and instructed him not to cut down any more trees. So all of that is documented and you do have the photographs. What I really want to talk about today, and I really have one of these why questions. And it isn't even a why question, it's a how come question. And how come every time a neighborhood becomes about 40% black, we start hearing about low income housing? No matter what the income is of the people that are there, no matter what the condition of the housing is there, we start hearing about low income housing. Now, I understand that there's this thing that there's not enough low income housing in Stonecrest. I suggest that you look at the U.S. Housing Authority map, and it will show you that the majority of concentration of low income Section 8 housing is on the south side of DeKalb County. You don't hear Dunwoodie or Brookhaven or anybody talking about low income housing. What Brookhaven is talking about doing is making it so they give their people a grant so they can afford to live there. Now, it's deeply concerning because we do have affordable housing here. We have the most affordable housing in the metro Atlanta area, especially for single-family middle-class neighborhoods. Even our upscale house, if you look at places like Sandstone Estates and everything else, those houses are extremely affordable when you look at the same style house in Buckhead or Brookhaven. I have to tell you like this, I think everybody's seen Black Panther. And one of the most important things he said in Black Panther when they talked about opening up their borders is that when you open up your borders, you have to be willing to accept it. Now, if you want to make all of this low income housing available here when the DeKalb County already has a housing authority that's placing people in Stonecrest, then you have to remember that you are giving up the right for any upscale development because everybody knows upscale development and upscale retail does not mix with high, with low income. And the other question I want to know is where are you planning to put this low income housing? Are you planning to put it over on Evans Mill across from Spring Lake? Are you planning on putting it on Rock Springs? Are you planning on putting it outside of Spring Lake or Stonecrest Parks? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Cofield?
That's it, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll move into our agenda items. Out of the press, the resolution for approval for establishment of the housing authority for city of Stonecrest. City Attorney?
Adam. So before you start, Madam Attorney, if you don't mind, please, because I've heard, I had to get an education on this whole housing authority, so it was brand new to me. And quite frankly, Mr. Dave Marcus has sort of pointed out some wording that I had heard before, but I recently got an education on it. But establishing a housing authority does not have the premise of low income. Some of the, some of the nomenclature changed to, you know, working class or working class people. But just because you're establishing an institution with regards to a housing authority does not automatically mean low income. But I'll clarify that later. Madam Attorney, I'll allow you. I yield to the podium.
You're correct, Mr. Mayor. And the fact that term low income housing is something that IRS uses to describe what the state of Georgia calls affordable housing. So you may hear the terms workplace, workforce housing, affordable housing, used interchangeably with low income housing. And all these bond deals that you've had come before you for these senior projects, they are low income housing, but that doesn't necessarily mean what some people would associate that being like Section 8 vouchers or the DeKalb County Housing Authority that issues Section 8 vouchers through HAP contracts. That is not the only purpose of a housing authority. And so this is not the purpose of this ordinance, this resolution. State law actually allows you to activate the housing.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Repeat that last part again.
Last part.
This is not intent for...
This is not an attempt to create a HAP or a Section 8 type of housing situation within the city of Stonecrest. So for example, you may have heard of the Atlanta Housing Authority or the DeKalb County Housing Authority that issues vouchers to low income, what we would normally consider people to be of low income. That is not the purpose of this resolution. The purpose of this resolution is to activate your housing authority, which you are able to do under state law, which is created so that you can participate in those bond deals and those financing deals in order to create revenue for the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just piggyback on what Attorney Preston said, you know, I think it's important to note that the creation of the housing authority unto itself doesn't grant anyone special entitlement to a project. You know, a project being considered for bonding, be able to utilize a bonding component of this, it would still have to go through the same process, it'd have to be approved by the development authority or by this authority. And in the case of, in some cases, if they would need to, if there's required for them to go through the rezoning process, all that, all those same requirements will still be in place. So it's not, you know, nothing is guaranteed, someone must present a project, the authority will still have the option of saying, no, we do not feel this is the best for the city or it is. You know, again, I think a lot of the focus in places where this has taken place previously has been on senior housing. I think that's a lot of focus in this case as well.
Excellent. Do you have any questions for? Madam Attorney, come forward.
The second where it, the members of the city council have been presented with compelling information for the need for a housing authority. You elaborate on that a little bit more.
This is tracking the language from your charter, as we talked about it last meeting, this is something that you don't have right now and that there is a need for this within the city if you want to exercise your powers under the state law. And so that would be your compelling reason.
Is there anything pending that you want to be put in place?
Not aware of any particular project that's pending, Michael Weyman.
I know there's been, we previously spoke with a project that had approached the county, and there may be consideration for them to do some, I think, they approached it previously, I'm not sure if where, where, exactly where the stance of that project is, but it was one that the council, it went through rezoning, went through the process, council approved the project, there was a component in there, they're trying to do something similar to this, going through the county's housing authority, I think it's fallen through or something, something's transpired in regards to it. So that may be the first opportunity to, maybe one of the first ones be an opportunity to take a look and explore as to whether or not we want to pursue that.
And it was a senior, it was a senior housing also.
And you make the comparison, you say that this is standard for old cities, all new cities are going this way with the housing authority?
All cities have the right under the state code to create this housing authority. So new cities and old cities and many cities have taken advantage of that opportunity to be able to promote this type of housing and to have that tool to both create housing in the cities and financially benefit from it.
Otherwise, we using the DeKalb County housing authority to get certain projects done?
Yes, sir, and DeKalb would retain them.
The DeKalb would benefit from it and not the rest?
Yes, sir. The same project could occur right now, just some crisis would not.
A question for you, who would be on this housing authority and who would establish that membership? How would that be structured?
The state law sets how they're appointed, and I believe the mayor appoints the members.
So where's a copy of the state law structure of it? Do we have a copy of that?
I could give you the OCGA provisions if you'd like to have them before you vote on it, but I don't have them off the top of my head. If you're ready to talk with me, I apologize.
I would like to have them.
Now, conduct is the same way that we do with the other appointments. I think, because of my own preference, I would take recommendation from council. And you'll make the appointments from there. Well, last question, City Attorney. Is there any cost to this? Cost to...
There may be some cost if you did a deal.
Right, but not to establish, do you?
Not to establish, yes, sir.
I didn't see this on the list of things needed for the transition. So kind of just wanted to know where this came from and how we were suggesting this. Haven't heard a lot of discussion though, how we got to this point. But I did take a note that it was not a part of our items of things to transition. So this is kind of coming off of the list of things we've been working on. Can you elaborate kind of how we got here, why we're here, why it's important to do it now versus later, almost the same thinking we've had with the historic preservation or the new council, questions why, then why now? How did we get here?
But this is not something that you have to do during your transition period. You can decide not to do it period if you wanted to. I don't think it was on that transition list simply because it's not something that we have to do at the end of the transition. My understanding is it came up because, I guess, of developers since they had deals falling with the DeKalb County and since it was a missed opportunity. But that's about all I know.
I brought it up, I brought it up because of the opportunity of the senior housing that we had a chance to do it. And we're going to take the same opportunity through DeKalb County, which would have avoided us from collecting fees, it would have avoided us from collecting revenues and still helping them get their project off the count at the same time. That's all I can...
Can you repeat for me again? It sounded like I heard you say that. The same type of development can happen in the city of Stonecrest. And we not take advantage, we would not have the opportunity to take advantage of the proceeds of those. But DeKalb County will, or did I miss hear that?
If they went through the DeKalb County Housing Authority, then DeKalb County Housing Authority would get the fee.
So are you telling me that they, they are able to go through the DeKalb County Housing Authority to develop a property inside the city of Stonecrest?
Yes, sir.
Or they are...
It's a little bit more complicated.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it is for the... It is for the purpose of bonding the project. You know, anybody can come in, you know, they can make, make application to, for development. And again, they have their appropriate zoning. I think in this case, the, the big mechanism, big piece that's associated with the housing authority is directly associated with the bonding mechanism that can be, that's leveraged through the housing authority, whether that's done by the county or through the city. And the, and the revenue associated with the law, issuing the bonds, correct?
Yes, sir. Okay. It beginning, beginning to make sense to me. So basically, basically what we're looking at is being able to take advantage of that particular arena of development in the city of Stonecrest. But primarily, these properties would, there is no zoning attachment necessarily with these type of properties. In other words, if they went through DeKalb County, built in the city of Stonecrest, zoning was already provided for that establishment. The only difference is Stonecrest still wouldn't get the same, so to say, because of the zoning is already been provided for. They would still be able to build that facility, but the bonds that are issued that went through DeKalb County, we would not be able to receive that because we don't have a housing authority.
You not get the fee for issuing the bonds, that's correct. So you, this does not actually create anything, it just creates the opportunity to do something.
What's the range, or is there a range for those fees that the city will be getting for this?
I want to say it's like $100,000 per deal potentially. It's, it's a substantial amount of money. I don't know, either of you have a better guess, but I think it ranges on the type of deal, the scope, but it's, it's a substantial amount. Michael, what do you think about?
I think it's about, it was like the range I heard, they can vary, but.
And your cost generally would be if you had to hire a bond counsel or pay for an opinion letter from the bond?
The downside of this would be what? I mean, I'm hearing the upside, $100,000, city fees. What would, what would, we heard some citizens come forward and expressed their opinion about the housing authority and what we feel, what they feel that it is. You guys have evidently put some study and thought into this. What would be the downside of that?
I'll, I'll, I'll go first. You know, and that was my question as, as well. And I'd say my, my, my first concern was would there be liability on the side of the city in regards to the bond itself, if, you know, there was issues with the bond? I'm insured that's not the case, it would not be. So that was the one big, big component I was, I was mostly concerned about. The downside could be if you have a project where the city has, or that in this case, the housing authority has agreed to, to, to bond this project, you know, they're obligated to pay the bond back, the developer is. So the city's not under hope from a financial obligation. But if for some reason the project does, is not successful, like you get midway upstream, you know, what happened in 2008, 2009, where you had a number of projects that kind of started and stopped. You know, certainly the, the impression of, well, why'd you support a project and it didn't materialize? I mean, so that always runs a risk of something like that happening, so from a, from a, from a perception standpoint, certainly. But beyond that, I mean, the biggest concern I had was if it obligated the city in any kind of financial way, or in general liability, and I didn't, from what I've discovered based on my question, I haven't seen that's the case. But certainly does tie us to a particular project. Again, bear in mind that it's not a guarantee. Any entity can come and make the requests as a housing authority, they have to meet whatever criteria they have to meet, but the housing authority would still have the final authority to say yes or no to that particular project, as to whether or not they want to issue that bond.
Okay, just for clarity for myself. So there is a project in the defaults. Will the city be held accountable for the bond that it supported? Will not? Who will be responsible for that?
Usually, it really is going to depend on how the transaction is structured and typically is structured so these are special obligations, they're not supported by the city's full payment credit, which means that none of the city's general records are ever-
Does he have a bond counsel here, so?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions for you, Attorney Preston. I've been reading about some of these developments, and I, I hear you loud and clear on money. And, you know, I'm all for money, but all money may not be the kind of money we want, but I am all for money coming into the city. But I'm reading with some of these, that it's discouraging some types of developments. I looked at some task force committees that were put together by other cities, and I looked at the good, the bad, the ugly. And, and in weighing that, what I, what I have discovered is that, my main concern here is that I don't think we've had enough citizens' engagement, I don't think we've had enough discussion from the citizens who live here. Citizens' engagement, what do I mean by that? What I mean is having community meetings or meetings where the citizens will have a voice. Let me tell you what Brookhaven did, I think with their affordable housing thing. And I just read in the, in the newspaper just recently, they had a task force that ran for, I think, almost two years, collecting data and information from citizens and finding out what the people in, in Brookhaven wanted. I am sick and tired of different projects, good, bad, or ugly, being rammed down the people's throat, and the people are not getting an opportunity to just be heard. The task force would be from stakeholders and citizens all over the city or maybe outside the city. And they would review and evaluate the good, the bad, and the ugly of this, but no one has explained to me what is the rush? And why can't we engage the community more? The constituents of District Five wants more discussion on this. They asked me to ask the council to provide more. Once we engage in something like this, it's not like some of the other ordinances where we can just vote again the next meeting and reverse it. Anything that's dealing with zoning and infrastructures, you just can't reverse it that easy once they're in place.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. So I'll, I'll follow this and then we'll move forward.
I got one more question.
Sorry, then.
Can you talk a little bit more about the third where is? I've heard some of the, I've got a few here about this, but can you explain a little bit more about this third where is?
I think I've messed up my papers.
It talks about, the members of the city council declare that there is a need for a housing authority, that there is a shortage of state and sanitary dwellings in combination with the city available for persons of low income that rent they can afford. That statement almost contradicts everything that we said about the housing authority.
Well, what that is, is the purpose of these bonds would be to provide housing for low-income people.
Right.
So, but the low-income people being, that is again synonymous with the term "affordable housing." So low-income housing is how the IRS describes for what we call "affordable housing" or "workforce housing." I wish they didn't use that term, but they do. And what you mean when you say "affordable housing" depends on the type of deal. So for instance, some of those senior projects are going to have a family, so for a family and a senior deal, it's a little bit different, but it's based on what type of funding that they're getting, what type of bond it is, and there'll be a maximum amount of income to the person that can live there. So I know it's kind of hard to give you a good answer because it kind of depends on the project, but we're not, it could be a Section 8 project, but that's not what we're talking about today. We're talking about creating this so that you can issue bonds for low-income housing, which is a little bit different.
The bad opportunity exists on both ends of the spectrum, I thought you all.
Potentially, it's the same body that would do it, but this, what we're talking about today is the intention to do the bond deals. And once again, if you, you know, want further consideration on this, then that's certainly up to you all if that's what you want to do. We're just presenting an opportunity to you.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. So you're saying with, with Ms. James, ma'am, city attorney, appreciate it. I'm going to move forward, defer.
I can answer.
All right. All the better?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Rule number three, resolution to establish a Stonecrest Olay District Steering Committee. I don't know which attorney brother is on this, I'd say Councilman Clinton. Yeah, okay. All right.
Wanted to turn to you. I think we would do this last couple of sessions, and basically the, we brought forth Attorney Knight to sort of elaborate on exactly what it is that the Olay District, I mean, I'm sorry, the city of Stonecrest, area of Olay District would comprise that committee and what would we do, and the membership. There is only one change from the last conversation we had, and that change was to add another member, bring the total number of members to 16. We're actually replacing a member with a new member. And other than that, it's the same as time.
All right, councilman.
Were we replacing?
Yes, Mr. Knight, if you don't mind.
Sir, I know there actually is one other change, and it's an addition of the phrase "make clear" that the term of this committee would begin January 1st and would end January 31st. This is a very, very short live committee.
Mr. Knight, did you mean January 31st or December 31st?
I'm sorry, January 31st, sir.
You meant these.
It would be, it would be effective January 1st with the appointments, and that the term of the appointments would end January 31st.
Okay. Only 30 days?
Only 30 days.
Right. See, it's a short, yeah, we're trying to get to the point real quick. It's not a long-term, one-year thing. We're, you know, we're trying to make a recommendations to the Olay changes in the Olay District, and we, we need to work with this.
I mean, we will, we will be moving at lightning speed, sir. If I can, if I can do anything about it.
You didn't think like-
Okay, so, wow. That's impressive. All right. Mind your council.
Just a quick question for Councilman Clinton about the members. You say you're replacing. Who is the member that you're replacing?
Alan Carmile. I believe that's how you pronounce his last name. And he would be replaced with Bill Allen.
Okay. I think the last time we discussed it, my only concern was about, I was concerned about nepotism with, with the husband and wife team. Has that been, is that still part of this committee? I think it was, it was you and your wife that both started on the committee.
Right.
And I had a lot of concerns about that.
Right. And I understand your concern. However, this is a purely advisory committee, and again, I would say there are 16 members of them on this committee. It's a short-term committee, very focused group, so every, I mean, if there was voting, you were talking about 1/16 of an individual as opposed to a small council where you have six people. But, Mr. Knight?
Yes, sir. If I may clarify, I'll be on the committee representing my clients. The anticipation was that Edwina Clinton would be on the committee in her capacity as vice chair of the Stonecrest Business Alliance and representing the business alliance.
And I understand that, Mr. Knight. However, I, I have reviewed how these things are handled with some of the other cities, and it's the public trust that I'm concerned about. So I, I do have a concern about nepotism, and I don't want to set a pattern for it being acceptable, whether it's 30 days or three years.
Okay. We've heard from everybody.
Have you updated the wording? Or have you- Oh, there it goes. Sorry, never mind. I got it.
In terms of the question of nepotism, my only concern was that it was, full disclosure, some sensitive was disclosed, I'm okay with it, it's just that we at some point will have to establish a policy relative to that. So I think it points to that. But full disclosure, if we were by individual, like I said. Okay.
And, and like I say, I, I just want to go back to, I just want us to start setting a pattern of if we're going to do a policy for it, it doesn't hurt to start today. We don't, I don't need a policy to know that nepotism may not always serve this city's best interests regardless of the length of time of the committee.
Right.
And I am totally against nepotism on any of these committees.
Okay, we've heard from everybody.
Sorry, one more question.
All right.
So are we saying that, I just want clarity, I'm not debating, only the initial members are for 30 days, or?
No.
Under the terms section, it says that they'll serve for a succeeding term until the end of the city's fiscal year. Consecutive terms are permissible. And then we say the initial members are from January 1st to the 31st. So are we just saying that this initial group is required, and then anything beyond that will be, be longer, or it's just totally okay?
Well, the committee itself will dissolve in 30 days, so, I mean, that makes that really no effect. But I think this is just the terminology that's generally, generally used in, with these type of offices. So that's what the city allows for, even though we're not its foreman. So the entire committee will dissolve in 30 days, from January 1st to, oh, into January 31st. And all recommendation will be made, and all those recommendations will be presented to a review by the council and city management or staff. Are there any amendments to increase that timeframe, timeline? Well, see, the background here is that staff is already working on looking at the Olay District. We have some pressing concerns within the Olay District that need to be addressed right away. And so after 30 days, it's not going to, I mean, staff got to come up with a recommendation in the next 30 days anyway. So it's, you know, there's no provisions to, in, in the terms.
If the motion is made, can we just make sure that it's clear? Because the way I'm reading it, and if anyone else goes back to read it, and again, I'm not debating it, the issue is that it leaves the impression that only the initial members are here for 30 days and that the availability for anything else beyond that exists. So that's not the intention, it's restated under the terms section.
So I'll, I'll take the motion from you, city council. Stay it however you feel comfortable.
So, you said it's under the terms? Yes, under the terms, section four.
Maybe our attorneys can weigh in, just, I mean, really tell me, don't worry about it. It just leaves the impression that it's more than just 30 days.
Wish I had, city attorney.
I mean, I don't think anybody feels strongly about the language that is currently written. So speaking of, it clarifies the issue.
Can you speak in the mic?
I don't think anybody feels strongly about that language that is probably as referencing. Like Ms. Clinton said, it just might be, you know, just surplusage language that doesn't really affect further moving with the council, with the commission is going to do, they want to dissolve in 30 days. So if nobody's wed up to that language, why don't we just remove the language as opposed to leaving the language?
Sir? Sir? Excellent. So having said that, I'm going to put this back on Councilman Clinton to make the, to make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I offer motion that we adopt the ordinance with the removal of the terms.
All right, I'm removed. And, and, sir, any further discussion? Seeing none, all the better? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Pass the final one. Okay, the ordinance setting work session for the city council meeting, dates, times. We have taken in a lot of considerations, I would, as to how we want to do this, and this is what I'm hearing from the constituents and councilmen. and this is what I'm hearing from the constituents and council and staff. Nobody wants to have any more morning meetings. Period. So that means that meetings will move to the evenings. Based on as many schedules that we could put together and council, I'm leaving this on up to you all today, so make a decision on it. The available, the available days are second and fourth Mondays. Or second and fourth, oh, let's see, Mr. Mayor.
First and third.
First and, yeah.
You're the first and third. You're considering second and fourth from the last conversation.
Right, second and, second and fourth Mondays instead of first and third Mondays.
Right.
And in consideration for people that work, that's on the council. The, our councilor's on the side. Starting at six, like we've been doing, six to seven for work session and then seven on for, for city council meeting. So second and fourth Mondays for work session and council, starting at six o'clock for work session, seven o'clock for.
I'm sorry, so you're saying it's second?
Yeah, second and fourth Monday, exactly. So second and fourth Monday and then, starting at six, right?
Oh, are you reversing it back at work session one?
No, we're going to use straight. Yeah, so work session then council, work session then council, because quite frankly, I had to concentrate on which date was what for, we were flippity-floppy, flippity-floppy. So I rather just know in my mind, it's second and fourth Mondays, work session is six, council meeting is seven.
Starting the fourteenth?
That's why I said earlier, what day would that be, Councilwoman, because I haven't.
The fourteenth is, Mr. Mayor, the fourteenth is the second Monday in January. First Monday is the seventh, second Monday is the fourteenth, so and then the fourth Monday.
Is it twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Yes, so we have starting on fourteen, January fourteenth.
This is just the first read, so are you going to?
This is just the first read of the ordinance, that's what I was saying. This is just the first read, so you can adopt it tonight.
All right, so then how do we get to the second read to be able to adopt it? Will we call for a special call meeting?
We were just discussing that, you can do a special call meeting or you can leave the January meeting where it is, because it is currently scheduled for January. So you can begin with that and then your schedule become effective immediately thereafter.
Okay. And then they can take the fourteenth.
The meetings. I'm sorry?
Then they can take the fourteenth.
Yes.
Right, okay.
That's fine, I just, I think we, we got real lucky tonight that you had a work session less than an hour, but just put every work session at least within an hour. Is that going to be sufficient?
Been doing that for a year and a half, every once in a while, every once in a while we go over.
It's rehearsed, so the work sessions are on, I need to call this. But that's just my concern, not enough for every session.
Well, I'll tell you what my concern.
We can make it enough.
What, the morning meetings allow me, and it's not about me, it allows me time to be here for the full meeting versus the evening, even if it's five or six o'clock. I'm racing from downtown to be here. So if we're making work sessions only an hour every meeting here, likely to, I would miss quite a few of every work session if I get caught and be dragged or anything and given flexibility for a longer work session. So at least I know some days, at least I know on Wednesday mornings, I'm here for everything because I'm not fighting to come from downtown. But I say that because in the nation it says five o'clock, so, and it says first and third.
You'll never make it at five.
No, no, I won't.
Exactly.
When I first thought, I said, well, it doesn't matter if it's first and third or second or fourth, I ain't making five o'clock no way. But, so now it looks like we're entertaining the second and fourth and then six o'clock versus five o'clock, so it's completely different than what's in the council paperwork, so I just want to make sure I know what we're doing.
So, so second and fourth? Second and fourth, all right, and then six, six P.M.
And are we still keeping the zoning things on certain?
That, it's not missing that, that's why we did, that's why we did the Monday dance, because we have to be certain Tuesdays for solving, and all of this was in preparation of all considerations, the constituents first, then council, actually, then, we were the last consideration, it was staff days, then then council. We're working the devil out of Brendan and Bible, so.
Let me ask you this, in the event that we have a work session scheduled for one hour and you only get through half of the work session, is it, is it to add it after the council meeting, finish the work session, or that too much?
No, yes, with the head.
After the seven P.M. work.
I would rather do that, Councilman, than say, than be six to eight in Stone and then, you know, no, that is a really good idea.
Yeah, as long as it's not a meeting that we have planning and zoning on, because then we'll be here from eleven o'clock to three in the morning.
Well, now, since we have both solid dates, since we have both solid dates, we don't have to load up all the, you know, hearings on one, exactly, on one council, exactly, because we were doing that because of the evening schedule, just one evening schedule, yeah.
Well, it's better for staff to be here after work hours, not during work hours?
Those two days.
I was imagining it would be easier for them to be in this meeting while they're muddled.
Well, let's get this up, let's get this up.
After work.
You got this. Well, don't give Brendan all that up now, just. Let this go. Okay, so for clarity, second and fourth Mondays, six P.M., work session, seven P.M., council meeting, in the event that we need extra time for work session, and on this schedule, then after council meeting for that, okay? This classifies as first read? Very good, yes.
This will be the first read.
All right, so we're in. All right, thank you. And for clarity, council, so we'll still keep the January third. Second. January second, council meeting, and then we're giving the second read at January second, council meeting. Very good. That is, is that daytime, huh? Daytime? That is Wednesday daytime, okay, all right, very good, last one, all right.
What's the first meeting, don't you judge?
Second.
Oh, okay.
Second, all right. Okay, number five, the resolution to establish a Stonecrest film committee.
Now, Council, this is a, this is the resolution we was discussing the last work session and what we're doing here is looking to formalize the, the creation of the film commission was established back a number of months ago, it's never been formalized by way of resolution and put some structure behind this, so our attorney's been working on, putting together correctness in somewhat the same manner that we currently have our education committee, just a lot of the same, a lot of same structure with this, with this committee. And again, this is the film and entertainment committee. The primary function and duties will be the study and research matters of interest and import related to the film and entertainment industry, as such matters relate to the city and may from time to time offer written recommendations to the city council after the conclusion of such study and research. Members must attend two-thirds of the film and entertainment committee meeting to the calendar year, if failure to do so warrants you moving from the committee. Again, you see the membership requirements, again, the terms. Each film and entertainment committee member shall serve to the city and the district's fiscal year, consecutive terms are permissible. At this time, in speaking with Councilman Rob, if you scroll down to the bottom, right now, the initial members are Councilman Rob Turner and city manager or designated as ex officio, and that would likely be, at least initially would be our development manager, Mr. Reno Wright. We didn't have other names, my understanding that we.
I have those names, but I, I'm still waiting for my councilwoman, Madonna, to give me a last one.
I heard Kent Reeves.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I sent it to you.
Well, if you want to read the names, the clerk can take those names down now, we can kind of formalize this and we'll be done at that point. Okay, District One, we have Ms. Patrice Dechar, what's it?
Pat Dee.
Pat Dee. And I have her information. Pat Dee for District One.
You could supply me with that list before it's done.
Yes, I will do that. District Two, we have Ms. Verda Watson. District Three, we have Mr. Todd Brown. District Four, we have Ms. Stacy Thibodeau. And District Five, we have Mr. Kenneth Reeves. So that would establish the committee itself, the structure of the committee and the initial members as stated.
Just a quick question, months back, when we actually initiated this committee, I was told that these committee members were already in place, so what happened to those? Because I even asked to serve on that committee and I was told that the committee was already in formation, so what happened to that committee and are we starting this over with the, with the members? And then let me just add, we have, we voted or resolved for several committees and like the education committee and we're not getting any updates, so maybe you can speak to that even now or another day. What's the purpose of the committee and are they giving updates to the council?
They certainly can, they serve at the pleasure of again, as well, the council for the intent of giving provided information, if that's something, make sure they reach out to the chairs of any committee that the council would like to hear from and have them to come in. I don't know if it's mandated in their, in the resolution that they have to, I'm not sure if that's part of the understanding, but if there's a committee that the council would like to come in and have them provide an update to, certainly upon request, make sure to reach out to them and have them do.
I just want to recommend that if we're going to institute a committee, you know, we can be more effective if the committee provide us with orderly, annual, you know, some type of update on what the committee is doing so that if a council member wants to, or a citizen or somebody, you know, who can bring some value to that committee, you can't bring value to something if you don't know what the committee is doing.
Yeah, yeah, you know, between that and or attending their meetings, certainly, they meet on like, the education committee.
Well, we have the.
They meet on a regular basis.
We have the education committee, we have the budget committee, we have the film committee and I can't think of the, oh, the radio mountain, whatever, what I'm trying to say, it doesn't make sense to form committees if we're not going to get updates on what's happening to see the progress and the growth of the committees.
Let me just say something in reference to the first statement she made concerning the, the people that were involved with the first guest committee. That was a non-official group of young people who were in the industry, who were helping to develop the film commission because we needed infrastructure in place and we needed people who had a knowledge base, also had connections and responsibilities and are working in the industry to get that set up so that we can go forth and be established as a film commission. So we needed people to come and give us some kind of insights, kind of understanding. So really, they were a non-official advisory board and these people still will be involved in a sense because we need their expertise, we need their commitments and we need their contacts, so those people are still there. Now, for, in reference to the film commission, this is the structure of it, this is the official city structure, the governmental structure of it, and that's what we're doing tonight to do that.
Committee. Committee, what's the difference?
I don't know. I'll say commission initially.
Okay, fine, it doesn't matter, just so we're effective and we're getting things done.
Matt Buck, you got names?
Yes.
All right, do we need to take a visual?
Yes.
All right, Councilman.
I make a motion that we accept the Stonecrest Film and Entertainment Committee.
Second? All right, probably moved, and second, any further discussion?
Can I make a counter motion?
Make a substitute motion.
Substitute motion, that we accept the film committee with the names as designated, but that we add, that we receive reasonable updates, either monthly or quarterly updates from the committee.
This committee will be structured like every other committee and will be producing that information to the council as necessary and as requested.
So the substitute motion was made, afford to be effective, it has to be a second. Seeing that, goes back to the original motion. Discussion on the original motion. What I'm trying to do, council and, and folks in the audience, is that every appointee is an appointee of the mayor. What, what I like to do with, with council, and the example I want to use here with Councilman Rob Turner, is I know he is a subject matter expert in this arena and I wanted him to pick the people that he wants to have on his, on the committee. Make sure we get it right here, because he knows what he's doing. So I don't, I don't manage the process in the way that I step in and stick my finger in it because it's unnecessary, but I, I just want to point out the, you know, the trust I have for you with regards to, you know, where we're going with this because I know, I know, I know where we're going and what you're capable of doing. So that's the, the ending of the discussion, but any further discussion? Seeing that, all the biter? All right, all the votes? All right, committee passes. Number six, the ordinance for the creation of Stonecrest Youth Council.
This ordinance will provide the city with the opportunity to partner with the youth in the city of Stonecrest. I have received a number of inquiries from parents as well as students and I believe I forwarded to council members a list of letters from students at Wilson Academy. Many of them were and are in favor of a youth council for the city of Stonecrest. I believe we've sent out several emails to all council members asking if they had any questions or concerns about the youth council. The template that we use to form this council have already been vetted by Georgia Municipal Association. The template we use is from the city of Stockbridge. Most of everything in the ordinance is a clone of what's already happening with cities across the state of Georgia. There's very little, there's, in my opinion, there's little to no risk. The people who are working with these youths will be background checked by the DeKalb County Police Department. Most of them work in education and or they work with a youth nonprofit. This is an opportunity, I don't understand how we can build a great world-class city and not include the youth and have the youth at the table. The, the youth have already voiced their opinion that they would like to be at the table, this is a grand opportunity, we were hoping to get this, get this ordinance passed before the mayor's conference, which is. And I have not received any questions, um, from the council members. I did ask for names of individuals that they would like to have served on this advisory committee. Um, and someone had a question about when is the right time to pass a youth ordinance? And my answer to that is yesterday. And Stonecrest needs a youth council, and I think it's bad, bad politics when we need a youth council and we play politics over what's best for our young people. I don't know if anyone looked at the crime statistics and the, uh, the need for youth diversion programs, but this will also act as a diversion program of diverting our youth away from things that are horrible. Stonecrest have a problem with teenagers committing crime in this city. And to me, this is not something that we need to ponder for another three to four months. We've been pondering this ordinance for almost six months, and I can't understand why the politics precede good policy. And good policy is what kind of city would we be if we don't look out for the youth? And yes, a nonprofit can do what we can do, and they can do it in a different way, but why won't the city open up the opportunity for the youth to shine in, in January at the mayor's conference? For the city to take the necessary steps to let the youth know, not only do we care about you, but we're going to give you a seat at the table with the council. And I'll entertain any questions that anyone have. I know that, um, Ms. Cobble is the youngest member on this council. I have asked her to serve as one of the advisory members, and she has graciously accepted. Um, Rob Turner, whose wife is a school board member, um, over this district, has graciously , uh, supported this legislation. And I would hope that tonight, that the council can put aside our differences, whatever they may be, and do what's in the best interest of the children. And I have a couple, I got a list of letters, I am going to read one of them, but I'd like to open up the floor for the, the council members who, uh, have some concerns about voting on this tonight. I'd like to, um, open it up and see if I can answer your questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, floor is open for the council. Are there any questions?
Let me add one thing, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Um, I initially, when I introduced this legislation, I initially asked for a budget, for a 2018 budget, um, which, um, we were not able to grant, um, a budget to get this program started. And then I asked for a budget for 2019. And then I came back and I said, okay, if you can't give us not even a hundred dollars or not even a thousand dollars or ten thousand for the youth for 2018 or for 2019, then I said, I have Stonecrest business owners who have told me, I'm ready to support it, I'll sponsor it. So even if you're concerned about the money, which to me is a shame because we should be able to put something into our youth, but let's, let's give the benefit of the doubt. If you don't want to fund it, council, then please go ahead and pass the ordinance and let the, uh, private stakeholders and the citizens fund it. But I think that good policy is passing this ordinance.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this was just a few months ago, and my position is unchanged. And that is that we definitely need a youth council, but I don't see how we are ready to address it. Now, we're using contract employees who would, if you're going to represent the city, they're going to have to be involved. And I think we need to wait on this one until we're ready to deal with our young people properly, and we not take on something that we can start and not know if we're going to be able to sustain it. So I am the same position to wait a little longer before we put this in place.
Okay. All the comments? All right, then I'll take a motion from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to defer, to try to satisfy Councilman Turner's, um, concern because, um, let's, for clarity for the record, um, these programs, I want the audience to know...
That's your motion. That's your motion. You can make a comment. What's your motion?
I'm going to make, make a motion to defer.
All right. Second. Motion to defer and probably second. Now, discussion. Counselman?
I want to address Councilman Clanton's concern. Um, oh, you're on my mind. Councilman George Turner's concern is that what we're, what I'm asking for, it's already in place in other cities. And actually, it's kind of embarrassing to me that they have passed some of these, it was a no-brainer, for some cities. Uh, they didn't debate it as hard, as hard as we are debating it, and they have less crime. Some of these cities have less issues with the youth than we do, and yet they have found the need to pass this. Again, the, uh, the individuals working with the youth, we've not, I talked to, um, GMA, we've not had one incident with these types of programs. Um, and, and in, in reality, I think it's a, it's a, it's bad politics to not pass this, and no one has given me a good, sound reason why Stonecrest can't pass a youth council. And these, these individuals that work with the youth, they are already background checked by the DeKalb County Police Department. I don't know what else, uh, George Turner wants. I, I think it's important for us to support these young people. And there's nothing that we've passed at any point in time that comes with zero risks, nothing. There's nothing that we've done with no risks. And yes, there's always some risk with everything, but I think the council needs to stop playing bad politics and get on board with the young people and pass this ordinance.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? They're probably moved and seconded. All in favor for the deferral?
Aye.
All of those? So defer. Number seven, in honor of this creation of Stonecrest Youth Council here by three. Counselman?
Mr. Mayor, same thing, I want to make a deferral because the two of these need to pass simultaneously like other cities are doing it. And so I would make a deferral that we defer this as well and bring the two up again at the next council meeting.
All right, I'll take that motion from you.
I make a motion that we defer the Stonecrest Youth Council Advisory Committee to the next, um, Stonecrest meeting of January second.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All of those? Aye. All right. Mary, in honor of this for recreation of historic cultural landmarks?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, um, I want to thank, um, Ms. Verdignas for her public comments earlier, and she was absolutely right. And, um, I believe if, um, if Ms. Attorney Preston wants to address some of Attorney Bernard Knight's concerns, which are unfounded and what we're trying to, uh, create here, this legislation will actually help Attorney Knight's clients. It would be an asset to his clients and, uh, his stakeholders. But as, um, as has been said eloquently by, uh, Mayor, I don't know if I can even say it better, this is the, this is the, kind of like, the, this will enable, this, this will enable the legislation to begin the process to preserve the historic, great, uh, the historic infrastructures and the green space. Now, we just experienced, um, a demolition of a, um, infrastructure that was deemed historic. If we had had this piece of legislation in place, we would have known that that particular, um, a building was historic. And she's absolutely right. I have spoken to several people, including, uh, the EPA, the, um, the, um, Conservation Board. And historic districts are created by the council. And this legislation will give us the opportunity to create, um, historic districts. And let me give some examples. Uh, with the Flat Rock Archives, the Flat Rock Church, the Clonkine Historic Association, Arabia Mountain, and the list goes on. Barter's Farm, we're rich in green space. Green space is the only thing that we have in Stonecrest that can't close its doors unless an act of God pick up those, that mountain and move it. Other than that, if it is the, the best asset that we have in Stonecrest, we need to preserve it. And preservation is what this ordinance is about, preserving it. But then taking it a step farther, if anyone up here have followed the links and, and did the research, you'll find that there's a lot of federal funding from the EPA and from other agencies that are going back to the federal government because they are asking that, that cities have this legislation in place before the city can actually reach out and apply for the funding. And I don't think anyone in here can tell me that Flat Rock Archives cannot use a facelift. This legislation would bring in thousands, not thousands, let me be correct, it would bring in millions of dollars for Mr. Waits who's sitting out there in the audience. And any council who, who can give me a good reason why we can't go forward with this legislation to rebuild and protect Flat Rock Archives, to protect the Arabia Mountain and, and all the beautiful trails we have, that's what it does. And I, yes, I am in favor of a historic district. That's the only thing that Stonecrest have, that we can't wake up tomorrow and say, they've closed their doors and moved to another city. You know why? Only an act of God can pick up the mountain and move it. And if you don't want to protect your most valuable asset that can drive billions of dollars coming to Georgia every year from tourism, I've done the math on it, and we are missing. It's a disgrace to these organizations that are sitting here today for you to play politics again, and I'm saying bad politics, with something that can help the city. There's nothing bad in this legislation. And if it's bad, you know what? Four votes can reverse it. But give it a chance. And I would like for the council to consider passing, not to consider, I'd like for the council to pass this legislation unanimously because it is for the good of the city of Stonecrest.
Okay, counsel. Uh, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor? It's interrupt, but it's my understanding talking to the attorney that this is actually constitutes the first read, and I know it's been heard previously, um, but I think it still constitutes a first read this evening. Is that correct?
Okay.
It requires two reads.
And I will tell you, I know staff has, we've received the, um, received that we have been going through the vetting process, I think there's still some, we're in the process of formulating some of our, our question comments, but we have begun our staff vetting process.
Okay. Uh, recognize this as a read, first read, all for the first read. Second read, January second. All ready? Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I want the council to know that I am available to fill the meeting with each one of you, and we can actually flush out your specific concerns. We can work with the city manager and Attorney Preston have, um, put countless hours into this legislation, and I believe she can even address it if she wants to. But she and I have spoken, uh, and went back and forth, we've, we've researched the funding, the links, and so everything that I've shared with you this evening, it's been vetted by our lawyer.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Um, the one thing I heard earlier from, um, Mayor as well as, uh, Attorney Knight and, um, and from us studies and from following the links and from reading and, there, a historic district is way more complicated than that's revealed, and this was happening, will happen. Um, Mayor herself said that even if we had that bill passed, it would not address the issue, it is a, a tool, I think is how you described it once, that we could pull off the shelf, but without actually, that would allow us to, um, to convene a committee or a commission that would then address historic districts, historic, uh, places or parks or monuments and the likes. Um, and my study has shown in not all cases, is that a good thing. For one, one thing I have to decide, what you're talking about, when you're talking about historic designations by a committee, you're leaving that up to a committee to say what's historic. It's not automatic. It's not like automatically, the two buildings, for instance, that were torn out would have automatically been designated as historic. So there is a process and a procedure, and process and procedure costs money, which is not necessarily the bigger issue, but it also calls, is a cause for a level of understanding that council, I think, going forward as we look backwards, we need to understand the fullness of what we're talking about and what we're promoting. Um, you know, I understand, you know, um, I don't want to say emotional, but conventions about particular, uh, issues, but those conventions should be spread it with factual information as easily and sensible and makes sense for the entire community. For instance, one, you know, it may very well be favorable to Mr. Waits, but for a neighbor, if we did designate that area as historic district, the neighbor might not find that favorable when he get ready to make repairs to his home that we now say has to be done with a certain type of material from a certain type, type of area. Sometimes it prices people out of the market. So there's a lot to be considered. The two things, the one thing that both, um, Mayor and, uh, Bernie Knight said was that it would be prudent of us to put some study into this and to look into what would be the proper procedure and see what it would cost us down the road. We don't want to make decisions based on convention alone. We want to make it based on some facts, and we have the time, we have the opportunity, and we should have the willingness to go forward and to approach this issue from that way. That way, we don't make the mistakes of having to reverse it, as Councilwoman Adama alluded to. All right, four, why, why should we do that? But we have the opportunity to study this out. And I think that we have a lot of people within the community and without the community that can help and can assist us to understand the fullness of this particular issue. So I would be in favor of the study, um, you know, but, you know, I, I do think that's needed, and, you know, with all due respect, I do not believe that Councilwoman Adama, and I think she will tell you this, it's not, it's a subject matter expert when it comes to historic district. We have access to the same set of facts, but I think we do need to bring subject matter experts to the table and see how this can best benefit the entire city and how we can move forward with it. I would be 100% agreeable to that.
If I can add, that State Law, um, was taken into consideration when the, uh, when the ordinance was prepared, and the research have already been done, and I was just selected by the Atlanta Regional Commission to serve on, um, they're putting together a regional, um, task force to be able to, and they're going to be working with cities who have this legislation. And let me add that this legislation actually have already been passed by the other new city who formed at the same time that Stonecrest formed. Now, the city of South Fulton have passed this. They're already, matter of fact, I spoke with their council people, and that's where I got the idea from. They've already passed it. It's on their website. It's working. And so to Mr. Clinton's concern, the research has been done. It's already been done. And it's already been proven that the, the funding can, can come in and benefit, and the city does have the authority and the jurisdiction, jurisdiction to designate historic districts. If we can't do it, who, why are we going to count on somebody else to designate what we think is...
We have access to the same set of facts, but I think we do need to bring subject matter experts to the table and see how this can best benefit the entire city and how we can move forward with it. I would be one hundred percent agreeable to that.
If I can add, that state law, um, was taken into consideration when the, uh, when the ordinance was prepared, and the research have already been done, and I was just selected by the Atlanta Regional Commission to serve on, um, they're putting together a regional, um, task force to be able to, and they're gonna be working with cities who have this legislation. And let me add that this legislation actually have already been passed by the other new city who formed at the same time that Stonecrest formed. Now, the city of South Fulton have passed this. They're alre, matter of fact, I spoke with their council people, and that's where I got the idea from. They've already passed it. It's on their website. It's working. And so, to Mr., um, Clinton's concern, the research has been done. It's already been done. And it's already been proven that the, the funding can, can come in and benefit, and the city does have the authority and the jurisdiction, jurisdiction to designate historic districts. If we can't do it, who, why are we gonna count on somebody else to designate what we think is historic? The state defines, matter of fact, I believe when I spoke with Attorney, um, Preston, she told me that the state have already defined what's historic. So if it's already defined, why are we gonna do another study and waste our hard-earned taxpayer dollars studying something that we already, we already have the answer to? And no, it's not emotion. This is not emotion. This is facts. This is good politics over bad politics. Pass the ordinance, council. It needs to pass.
Anyone else?
Uh, just briefly, sir. Um, this is a request for a commission, and sometimes you have commission, you have authority, and you have commit, as we mentioned, committee on this matter. And I'm looking at what just happened with the two buildings that were taken down, and it was a matter of us not being alerted to what was going on. I think that is something that we perhaps can put in place through other methods, that we will be alerted to anything that's been demolished, and we can make a decision whether or not it is a good move or not. And a lot of, uh, what we're trying to accomplish, sometimes you can over-legislate it and handcuff yourself on some things. So we need to make sure that before we do it, that we're not causing that to happen. And when you decide it's gonna be a committee, a commission, an authority, because when you go with a commission, a commission has broad powers that a committee does not have. And there are some obligations that come along with that, that the city would be bound to support, and we might, it might not work in our best favor. And make one thing, briefly, let me clarify here, I am in favor of supporting and protecting our historic, uh, buildings, facilities, and landmarks, one hundred percent. But let's do it the right way.
All right, thank you. Second, uh, first read somewhat. Uh, number nine, a resolution for Stonecrest City Center negotiation. Um, folks, we have an opportunity here, um, as council, as citizens, um, American council, to enter into a negotiation with, um, AFI, Allen Family Investments, for, uh, the acquisition, lease or lease purchase of the target building, um, for the purposes of, of public safety and auction rec and the like, to make sure that we have an opportunity to spend the correct, um, amount of designated money in the designated area for that purposeable building. Um, so what we put together here is a resolution for a team of people to negotiate with, uh, AFI, and that committee with the assistance of myself, Councilwoman McCollum, uh, City Manager, Mr. Harris, uh, Robert Scott, and Attorney Winston Denmark. What this does is allows us to do several things. One is that while we are, uh, negotiating with, uh, AFI, uh, this gives us some more opportunity to find out some things that we've been looking at with regards to repurposing the building and what it would cost. Mainly, as I mentioned earlier, starting with, with, uh, public safety, because the Campbell County is extremely interested in moving into that building, uh, from the East Precinct, we've been speaking with them for months now. Uh, second, it could include their training center. Uh, third, for the, the affinity of the recreation lovers that are up here, possibly inside Gotham with regards to that. Um, a, a, one of the things I know that, uh, Councilman, well, Rob Turner and I have been working on is to join an actual film companies with a film stage opportunity inside. So while we're negotiating these opportunities, we, oh, and last but not least, um, Councilman, um, George Turner, uh, what, one of the things that stopped a post office from coming to Stonecrest was a lack of a facility. Now we would have an opportunity to actually have our own post office in the same place. So what we deem this as is the Stonecrest City Center, and, uh, what this team will do, will start to negotiate from there and see if we can move forward, um, and bring back to council an opportunity, um, to make this happen. So, uh, counsel, any questions? Yes, sir.
Just looking at the members, I understand the mayor's, um, ex officio on all committees. Does the man serve on the committee as a member of, uh, Grilla?
I can serve on it.
Okay. I just didn't know what it was, either the charter. Migo?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware that the mayor is ineligible for service on his, on committees. Uh, I can certainly double check that, but as I sit here right now, I, I am not aware that the mayor is disqualified from serving on, uh, council committees. Opinions established by the council.
And we had the discussion on bringing in subject matter experts, and I know some of these, uh, members, I know them, and I know that they're very good at what they do, but it's just a, a dependent, like, that can give us advice on this matter, but this is no small undertaking.
Well, let's look at the members. You have your mayor, unproficient in several areas. Councilwoman McCollum, well, I consider the probably, the, the smartest of us all with regards to finance. Um, uh, what she does, and though she has access to, uh, our special bond person is sitting over here, um, you have, uh, City Manager Michael Harris, who has, uh, done this loss several times before. Uh, Mr. Scott, I thought I saw Robert Scott in the room. There he is. He is, uh, our local resident real estate expert who put together our deal here, and has thirty years of, of, uh, commercial, uh, real estate experience. Um, and we have, um, Attorney Denmark, and access to his staff.
Not discounting, you know, any other experts in the room. Um, a reputable firm was something that I felt would probably work better. We'll put their reputation on the line, we'll give them advice on a matter involving this much, uh, civic funds.
So I am going to point to Mr. Robert Scott, who is a very reputable firm, uh, it represents, as reputable firm commercially as you can get. So we needed a person that knew the particulars, not only in our market, but also about commercial real estate and negotiations.
So does he come as a firm and, uh, Mr. Denmark, legal firm, he's coming, or they come as an individual?
Well, I think they would, they, they come as, they come as their firms. They have access to, um, I shouldn't wanna call them, I mean, Grilla one-on-one, about what they know and where they're going.
I'll just say this, whenever you get me, you get all the expertise in my office.
That's what I thought.
That's what I'm saying.
Sign here.
There you go. And the big cat, the getting big cat.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I'll tell you that. Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. Is there a timeframe or a timeline in regards to negotiation efforts?
Um, I kinda wanna leave that up to the committee and come at the council, um, because we, uh, we wanna, we wanna move on this, I think, in, in reasonable form. All right. Okay, I'll take a motion for approval of the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve the resolution as read? Second?
Probably moving second. All in favor?
Aye.
All of those? Resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. The city manager.
Really brief, I, you know, there's been a couple comments made in regards to the recent demolition that's been placed, and I do wanna assure both the council and the citizens that, you know, since that time, there have been steps taken, um, um, in, in reference to that, most notably, the creation of a historic GIS layer. Um, early on, upon the city's first initial inception, you know, that was one of the issues that the council was, um, concerned with, about some of the blighted structure that we have within our communities, and so we have taken a, a relative approach at trying to have those areas addressed. And, um, you know, so I think as we step back from this and look at the process, we're in the process of kind of developing a process as well, we've been working with Ms. Cardenas as well. I meant that we had one case recently where, um, a, a location had been identified, that identified as blighted, a tree had fallen through the structure, and upon doing the research, kind of find out that it was actually listed as a historic structure. So we were able to work with that, um, property owner, um, put them in contact with Ms. Cardenas, and so they're working at trying to see what they can come up with, um, as we start the process of forming a, put the process in place. So I again just wanted to assure the council and the citizens that, you know, we're very much aware of this issue, and we're taking some, mitigating, maybe we have mitigated. Yeah, I know that's it.